Turn them off, put them away, no texting or communication during the council meeting, please. And if you will join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mr. Meehan, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Reed, Brown.
Here.
Lawler, Spicer, Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Atchison.
Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes haven't. Okay. First order of business, presentations. So, the first order of business is for the precinct one candidates to each have two minutes to come forward and make a statement, introducing themselves to the community and council, and whatever you choose to say during that two minutes. First up is Mr. Spratley. And I see that he is not here this evening. Councilmember Brown.
Can we have the candidates state their name and address?
I'll have it all cleaned out.
Yeah.
I live at 1101 Wiener Drive, and I'm running for the vacant first precinct council seat. Good evening, Mayor Atchison. Councilwomen Reed, Brown, and Councilman Williamson. I would like to use my time tonight to touch base with you on who I am and what I want to bring with me to this position if I'm chosen. In light of writing this on the observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, I have taken inspiration from him in writing it. Dr. King wrote, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" The reason I am here ties directly into that. I believe that if you have a problem, be a positive part of the change. Bring a solution to the table with you when you come. That being said, I have come before you multiple times to discuss things I think could be better with the city. Streets for one. We haven't ran a street sweeper since my dad died, not consistently. I would like to be part of the team that hires someone in the DPW that has a mechanic's license, because we sorely need mechanic's licenses, has a heavy equipment operator, and would be in charge of running the street sweeper. That's their job, run the street sweeper and maintain our equipment. That way, we know it's getting done, because you have to have a dedicated person to run that every day, because it's a horrible job. Dr. King also wrote, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong spot. Albion is as diverse now as it was when I was in kindergarten at Harrington Elementary. And one thing I know is that we may have all come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now. We are Albion, and we are strongest when we're together.
Mr. Farmer, that's the two minutes.
Oh, I is? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll wrap it up, then have a wonderful day.
Next candidate, I believe, is Mr. Warrensley, who is not here this evening. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Warrensley did email us and asked if his statement be considered tonight, the statement that he submitted to us regarding his interest in serving. If I can pull it up here, if I'm not out of line for asking, I wouldn't mind reading what he sent.
That's fine.
So, January 18th, Mr. Warrensley sent the following. "Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mayor Atchison. I am emailing you to further express my interest in filling the vacant seat in Precinct One. I have thoroughly evaluated the significance of this endeavor and feel I have the necessary skills to work with all of you to address the needs of our community. I am also an active member of my community, which has allowed me to discern the needs of others and inspired me to work more directly toward alleviating them collaboratively. I want to represent my precinct, because I am passionate about living my values and supporting others through service. If I am given this opportunity, I plan to work closely with each of you to familiarize myself with the demands of my role. I also plan on building connections with the Northwest Neighborhood Watch Coalition, Just Saree Resource Center, Housing Commission, my neighbors, and any other residential base groups who are concerned with the well-being of Precinct One. I recognize this critical time in Albion's history as one of great opportunity, and I am willing to do whatever it takes to ensure Albion becomes the best it can be. I look forward to sharing my public statement with all of you at the city council meeting on Tuesday. Sincerely, O'Neil Warrensley."
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, are you here this evening?
My name is Vicki Clark, and I moved here with my family when I was about three years old. We came from Tennessee. My uncles were here, and they kind of moved everyone to this direction that was all in the South. And I've been here most of my life. I moved out of the city for about seven years, moved to Lansing, and then I migrated back. Since I've been here, I've had jobs where I was always working in change or something new. And I remember Albion when I was a little girl and what it was, how it was flourishing, and how the businesses were everywhere, and there was plenty to do. And I look at Albion now, and I see something different. And I always have partnered myself to be the type of person that works through change. I've worked through a mental health service for the last 15 years, and I've worked on several boards in Battle Creek, and worked and learned things in this area, in that Calhoun County area that is not in this area, and that's always bothered me. And I would like to see some of the finances and some of the change that happens with our statistics to get this money in this area, be in our community, and make our community flourish the way it should and go back to where it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas, are you here this evening?
Good evening, honorable councilmembers and mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you regarding why I would like to be considered for the vacancy for Precinct One, councilmember. First of all, the answer is very simple. I love the city of Albion. It's been my home for over 40 years, and I want to assist in serving it. I've been a resident for the city of Albion for over 40 years, so this is my home. I've raised five children here, and they've all grown up into wonderful adults. And I appreciate that, because Albion actually helped provide a safe and diverse community in which they could mature and grow both intellectually as well as emotionally. And that's the same thing that I want to continue for other members here in Albion. I've been here, and I've stayed here through Albion's economic decline. I have had multiple opportunities to leave, but I would not leave simply because I believe that our city would come back, and I believe we are witnessing that comeback now. I've tried in the past to contribute, but did not have the time that I wanted to assist. So, I've had opportunities to watch the council meetings online. I've done due diligence in reading through the rules of procedures, as well as other things that pertain to the council. I've looked at the responsibilities that are involved in running and operating on the city councils, such as adopting and amending laws and procedures, and determining city policies, and approving the city annual budget. I've basically, if voted in, I'll be first of all, an active city manager. And some of the skill sets that I would like to bring to serve are active listening, research-based decision-making, self-initiative, and creative and collaborative problem-solving. I am loyal to the city of Albion, and I am committed to Albion. And I want the opportunity to serve the city as well as its citizens during this crucial time of redevelopment through serving as Precinct One's representative on the Albion City Council, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, I thank all the candidates, and Councilmember Brown. I thank you for reading Mr. Warrensley's statement.
You're welcome.
Next is the proclamation for 2019 Martin Luther King Jr. Essay winners. I think I have this here, right? City of Albion proclamation honoring Harrington Elementary School Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest winners. So, first I'll ask if any of those fine young folks are here this evening? Would you please step up to the podium and join me there?
Your Honorable Agent, I listened to your essay last night. It was inspiring, you did a marvelous job. Okay. I'll make sure that you get it on television. City of Albion proclamation honoring Harrington Elementary School Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest winners. Whereas it has been a tradition in Albion over the years to hold an essay contest on Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and whereas Principal Robert Giles, in partnership with the Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative, did hold an essay contest at Harrington Elementary School for fourth and fifth grade students, and whereas the essay submissions were evaluated by the Vista team, and whereas Carmella Hall, Kayla Oswald, Kaya Oswald, gotta hold your politicians accountable, Daryl Dean, and Taylor Phillips were declared the winners of the Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. Whereas these four children again read their essays and were presented with certificates of excellence at the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Dinner on Monday, January 21st, 2019. Now therefore, Albion City Leadership Mayor David Atchison, Councilmembers Reed, Brown, Lawler, Spicer, and Williamson, City Manager Latonya Rufus, and the city staff recognize that the words expressed by these young people serve as a banner of hope for our collective future, and we thank them for their dreams and aspirations so eloquently expressed in their winning essays. And witness whereof I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of this city to be affixed. Dated the 22nd day of January 2019, Mayor Atchison. Congratulations. You really did a lot. Yes.
Could we take a minute and hear her?
Absolutely.
I was there last night. Thank you.
I think that's an outstanding idea.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Was a wonderful leader who gave people hope for a better world. Dr. King wanted things, like we want things, like I want a million dollars, but we all know that's not happening anytime soon. However, Dr. King wanted something that could happen. He knew if people would work together, his dream could come alive. I want to help to do what he wants to do. I can start by helping my school to be a better place. Dr. King said even the smallest things make a difference. I can improve my school by helping other students with what they need. Like the other day, a student was having trouble in math, so I asked her if she needed help. She was having trouble, so I sat down and explained how to do the math, and gave her some problems to take home and work on. That is an example of helping other students. And you don't have to just help them with their schoolwork. You can brighten their day with a smile or a hello. You can be kind to everyone and be respectful of teachers and students. Doing these things in my school can help me to be a better citizen in my community, too. Dr. King helped his community and the world by using the power of words to seek freedom for all people instead of using violence. I can be a voice in my community by volunteering at places where people need help. I enjoy participating in Girls on the Run every year. We always do a community project to help others. One year, we held a bake sale to raise money for a local charity that helps our school. It felt good to do a small thing to give back to someone who has done so much. We can also show that we care about our community by keeping it clean. In the summertime, my mom and I go on early morning walks, and whenever we see trash people have left by the river, we stop and pick it up and throw it away. This may seem like a small thing, but everyone doing small things adds up to big things and can help change our community. In his most famous speech, the Eye of a Dream speech, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said that he dreamed for a future that would be a better place for his children and for the world, where people wouldn't be judged by the color of their skin, but where everyone could have equal rights and opportunities. I can keep Dr. King's dream alive, beginning in my school, community, and serving others. No matter who they are, what they look like, or believe, I can try to look at others from their point of view, and always try to understand others' positions with caring and kindness.
City of Albion certificate of recognition, appreciation awarded to Deputy Chief Mike Johnson in recognition of the exemplifying outstanding public service as a member of the Albion Public Safety Department for 28 years. With the highest standards of professionalism, we express our appreciation and best wishes for your retirement. Presented on behalf of the City of Albion and the Albion Department of the Safety. 22nd day of January 2019. I'm David Atchison, Mayor of City of Albion.
Thank you.
On behalf of the department, we'd like to present him with this chateau box. During his time with Albion Public Safety, Deputy Chief Johnson has served in just about every role that we have. He started here at PSO in 1991. He served as detective, and then road sergeant, lieutenant, and then later on, he became Deputy Chief as well. So, he was also a team leader and a member of the Emergency Response Team, which is the patch town, the lower patch. Thank you, Mike.
Kind of memorable ride here. Of course, the city has ups and downs, and going through it, and it'll continue to be a city, hopefully, with the zoo or almost coming out. Hopefully, with guidance from the mayor and council, they'll start thriving again. I hope the city luck.
Presentation on the Oklon Extended Care Facility. It's an update. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, fellow citizens. My name is Amy Ryman. I'm the Development Manager at Oklon Hospital, and I came here tonight to give you just a short update on what's happening with the different Oklon facilities in town. We had planned and expected a representative from Senior Care Partners Pace to be with us, but the weather in Kalamazoo is a lot worse than it is here, and she wasn't able to make the trip, so we'll reschedule that. She has a video she'd like to show you about the developments up there, but just go over it quickly. So, Oklon has had an almost $2 million investment in healthcare in Albion over the past year, and we are getting ready to open our new facility in Munger Place in the basement at 302 North Monroe Street. So, what's happening there in that Albion College-owned building is we are moving our primary care office from our B-Drive facility down to there. So, Dr. Sharon Boyce, Dr. Talia Phillips will be moving the Oklon Medical Group and Albion Family Medicine Practice to that office, and they will see their regular patients, schedule new patients, and see patients there. What will remain on B-Drive is the physical therapy and occupational therapy offices. Those will continue as they have been since they've been up there. The Oklon Dialysis Center will continue to operate as it has where it is. The other exciting development in that space is that we are opening an express care clinic, and this is open to anyone in Albion who is ill who needs help on an express care basis. This is just like express care facilities in Jackson, Marshall, everywhere around. We have a new provider who will be providing care there, as well as new staff, so you can walk into that clinic. They will be open Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If we find the need, we will open extended hours for flu season, and hopefully in the future, open on Sundays if it's needed. So, the facility on B-Drive where Dr. Phillips and Dr. Boyce had occupied, we are going to be leasing that to Senior Care Partners Pace to develop a senior center, a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly, and they are going to do a $1.5 million investment into that property to more be able to facilitate the program that'll go on there, and they'll come and give a big presentation on what that entails. So, we have lots more investment in healthcare in Albion. We're very excited. The clinic and the express care will both open on February 11th. So, does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes?
Thank you. So, the council received it toward early stages, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to kind of go back in once it's completed?
Sure, we can schedule that for you. That would be great. I do want to say, too, it's a partnership with Albion College. We will be also providing services for students from Albion College who are ill, and Bob and Ellie DeVries, who are longtime donors to the college and to the city, have loaned us their collection of Chinese folk art that will be hung in the facility there. The bane word I use for it is charming. You're gonna love it for some decoration for us up there, but yes, we will be happy to contact you and schedule the time that everybody can come down and see it, because they're almost, they're putting the last touches on everything right now. Councilmember Williamson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I just had one question. So, is there going to be a sick area and a well-patient area?
Correct. So, there's an entrance off of Monroe Street. That's the main entrance. You go through that entrance. There are then two doors. One is for people who have appointments, who are seeing their regular family care practice, and the other is for the walk-in clinic. Another explanation of this, too, is the draw station that's down at, what is the name? The Ralph and Mary Cramm Facility that will move into this walk-in space as well. So, we will do blood draw. If you have an order from anywhere, you can walk in and do that there, but that's the walk-in space, and it'll be defined when you get in there. But there are two different doors once you get inside that space. We also have an X-ray machine, and that's up and running, so we'll have X-ray services available on a walk-in basis for anybody who needs it.
Thank you.
Is that, is that your question? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Next is, scheduled is a presentation on the Albion's water quality, the PFAS levels. I know that Councilmember Spicer asked for some information on that, I believe it was at the last meeting. I'm not sure if there's a member of the staff here to make that presentation or answer those questions. City Manager Rufus is ill this evening, that's why she's not here, and so we'll reschedule that for a later time. Next is a presentation by Elijah Chalas, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly, on the National Liberty Memorial in Washington, DC. Are you here this evening, sir? Okay, public hearing, we have none, but we will move into public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only. No more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required. Please address your comments to the council, and I'd ask the folks in the gallery to be mindful and respectful and let them have their say, and if there are public comments this evening, if you state your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Yankee, 104 Irwin Avenue, Third Precinct. I have been asked and chosen to read a letter of support from Third Precinct constituents, over 30 Third Precinct constituents, for Nidia Wolf's reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2022. Dear Councilmember Brown, the residents of Precinct Three request you quickly confirm appointment of Ms. Nidia Wolf to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors. Ms. Wolf is a longstanding Precinct Three resident who brings decades of actual experience on Albion's DDA and a lifetime of dedicated service to the city of Albion, Precinct Three, and the diverse people who make up our community. Albion needs enthusiastic and engaged residents like Nidia Wolf to actively promote the economic development of our downtown business district. The emerging renewal of the downtown business district must be strongly supportive. The mission of the DDA includes the mandate to encourage historic preservation and actively promote the economic development of the DDA district. The city of Albion must have experienced businesspeople on the Board of Directors who have a personal, professional, and historic understanding of Albion's downtown business district, and a commitment to make our downtown area a vibrant space that attracts local residents and visitors from the surrounding areas to boost commerce in Albion. Ms. Wolf is previously all of that and much, much more. As the Precinct Three representative on Albion City Council, we depend and expect you to be primarily guided in debate and voting on the city council to support the best interests and will of your constituents, the residents of Precinct Three. Therefore, we petition you to quickly confirm appointment of Ms. Nidia Wolf to the Downtown Development Authority, DDA Board of Directors. Thank you.
Are there any further public comments this evening?
Good evening. Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street, also Third Precinct. I will just piggyback on the young lady's statements to remind the council that the DDA does take a certain set of qualifications to be on that board, and very few people in the city do meet those qualifications. So, if anyone does step forward willing to sit on those boards, we should not push them away. You know, I realize that, you know, some people feel that, you know, they are looking out for the entire city, but number one, you have to look out for the precinct. Thank you very much.
Any further comments tonight, public comments on the agenda items?
Kevin Monroe, 116 East Walnut Street. I'd like to take this opportunity to address the citizens, good citizens of Albion, and any visitors that we may have. GPW and Albion College do the best we can. College do the best we can to keep the sidewalks clear downtown, but even though it looks clear, there could be some ice down there, especially towards the curb or the new sidewalk that's put in downtown. I found out firsthand that it can be really slick down there, even though it looks clear. So, I just want everybody to just be careful down there to use caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments tonight on the agenda items?
Daniel Farmer, 1101 Weiner Drive. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will be emailing you my entire speech. It turns out I wrote it for probably three and a half minutes. I seen it was two in the email. I thought it was three, but thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to talking to you about it after you've read it. Thank you.
Any further public comments this evening?
Garrett Brown, 116 South Superior Street. Just going to speak very quickly on two topics. One, I appreciate the willingness of candidates to basically step up to the plate and offer their services to the city. One of the things about public service is really important is making sure that you do your due diligence and come to the council prepared and have your facts in order. One of the things that concerned me is there was a candidate this evening who stated their address as being 1101 Weiner Drive, and that address is actually in Precinct 5. So, I believe that person should check that, because I was fortunate to serve in the city council in 2011 when, after the census, we redrew the districts, and the division between Precinct 5 and 1 is actually at the intersection of East Broadwell and Weiner. So, if you're on the north side of the street, you're in 5, and if you're on the south side, you're in 1. So, the person on that Weiner Drive address is actually in Precinct 5. So, it's really important that you have those facts and be prepared, because that's what we expect from our elected or appointed officials. Second comment, as my time's ticking down here, is the council still has a vacancy, and so I think that appointments should include representation from 1/6 of the city in Precinct 1, wherever the person's going to be sitting. So, I think that that would be a reason why to postpone that. The DDA does have specific requirements by state charter, by state statute, basically ownership interest or affiliation with an ownership interest in the downtown. There's about 11 seats on there, and so not all of them are that, but that's usually if you're an employee or an officer of an organization in the downtown. I think one of the things that we have to make sure, though, I think it's, I live in Third Precinct, and I would not be included in Mrs. Yankee's comments. I don't share that opinion, but I do think it's important to, if we're going to trump experience, to realize that the last holder of our executive director position for the DDA was Ms. Wolf. And so, the concern is if that job is to basically promote the downtown, to have funding enough to basically provide for your continued employment, and that does not happen, it's hard to claim.
Mr. Brown, we're not going to, we're not going to make comments that are derogatory or besmirching people or their personalities, so confine yourselves to other than those.
Point of order.
Continue, Mr. Brown.
Can you chime in?
Ms. Brown, you are not recognized. Please be silent. Continue, Mr. Brown.
Oh, my.
With my, with my last...
Point of order.
Ms. Brown, you're not recognized. Mr. Brown, continue.
Okay, so my last two seconds.
I appeal the chair's decision on that. I appeal the chair's decision on that.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Okay? Make a motion.
I'm appealing your decision. It's for you, so you take the vote.
Okay. Anyone that thinks that the appeal should be upheld?
I do.
Those against? Okay, you've been defeated. Mr. Brown, continue.
Okay, so I don't know how much time I have left, but it's just basically just to point out that 1101 Weiner Drive is in Fifth Precinct, and that we, I respect that experience, but we can't just whitewash that, because there's positives and negatives in that experience. So, thank you so much, council.
Thank you. Any further public comments this evening? We will now go into closed session. We do have a quorum. We will adjourn.
We have a motion.
Oh, thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Still moved.
Seconded? Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to close session.
... So those troops can act as citizens. Change truths. Don't do anything to hurt us. For sure to see this. No worries. So there's been five years. When I was six years, two lectures. We're trying to relax. Oh, there with French. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Yeah, they're teaching and just like, but if you feel you're here, that you're just. Thanks. It's just great.
Especially for everyone you feed. Every week people walk in.
What the, my people. They can be the eyes of people who want to have a price on them. So I'm just trying to keep them on. So I'm trying to find out. Oh, I know what you mean, right? I mean, it's such a beautiful show. Boy, I'm starting to think, so just like fifteen, they did twenty years ago. Oh, they're good. Oh, the. You know, it's close. Not even thinking of the deal. It all worked out. You know what? You were saying. No, they weren't. I'm sure you're. And. Oh. I didn't want that in the office. High school would give me a resume. Like a boss. If this were the world. It's not the world. I'm better. You did the best. Really? I'm not a school on here. There's no one in there. Good, we had, we had. And we got so long. That's the work. I'm very awake. That's taking my home, so I'm patient tomorrow. It was nice being able to do a lot. I don't do that there. If you do it, make sure you do it right. I don't walk out maybe. Yeah, okay. Two windows and fill up the stair. Oh, is that a tree? Actually, of course. That's. Do you have a handle? Do I have a handle? Your air force. When you eighteen thousand. It's pretty precarious. But I'm glad you said. You're right. There's no art there. No, I got it. I got a lot of serious help. How was it? That's a nice facility. Oh, we are. Only my two bellies. You too. Really? I signed up. But now it's those things. They might be still not. That's what we're learning. Because not since that beginning. It's not once we take the other. And states okay with that. This way it's okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did you like? You just.
I knew they had some stuff to do. They were twice heavier.
I'm there.
Sure.
Yeah.
How bad did you feel?
How bad did you feel, family?
I had a thing.
Most people don't do it.
It's there.
Are you done with that?
Oh.
I'm downstairs.
I was, we have a small room.
As people.
I read the pictures.
Yes.
They think that's real.
That's right.
I agree.
But I, I, I.
I like you.
I am.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
I've been talking for thirty years.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I'm supposed to say.
Would you say it's.
I'm not seeing it.
See it for me.
That was a.
A different type.
Thanks.
They're trying to.
He's a character.
And who present.
I'd like to get a.
Judge.
I'm happy.
I said, well, I'm just like the.
I'm.
No, don't get to me about it.
No.
So.
Actually, when I was just like the.
That's why I said.
They got the show.
It's done.
It was all so much better.
You're not.
You're not.
I'm.
I'm.
This is not the house.
So that's not.
This is the other show.
You got it.
Yeah.
That was.
This is.
My.
Yeah.
I'm not getting very much.
You know.
Yes, I would.
That's true.
I'm.
So.
Two thousand.
I mean.
Um.
We also.
He's.
I was.
She was.
Five.
Squid.
Yes.
That's my character.
No.
Sure.
Yes.
I say.
First.
Hi.
See.
Okay. 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 We'll call the order and continue with the regular council meeting this evening. Councilmember Brown had a family emergency or family issue she even had to go deal with. Uh, so we no longer have a quorum. Uh, so most of the items on the remaining items on the agenda are discussion, but since half the council members aren't here and the roads are very nasty and the weather's not getting any better, uh, we'll dispense with the rest of the agenda items. Uh, there are some things on there for votes. Uh, I appreciate the residents that turned out in support of Ms. Wolf's nomination and it will come up again, but we'll postpone having discussions and taking any votes. Can't take a vote anyway, so if there's no objection from the remaining council members here, we'll move straight into council members' comments. So if any council member wishes to make comments. Councilmember.
Oh, you haven't called for things for next meeting agenda.
We have so much more here, so.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Your mic.
Uh, at the last meeting on the twelfth, I was not available to be here. Now, I'm, I'm going to read this because if I don't, I won't stay on track, so please listen. I would like to address the meeting held last Monday. I was on, uh, on December fifth, I booked airline tickets to Richmond, Virginia to visit my great granddaughter's fifth birthday. After I had booked those tickets, they started coming up with meetings, meetings, meetings. I started seeing all the extra meetings that were going to be called and informed the city clerk, Mrs. Domingo, that I would not be available for those meetings. I had already purchased a four hundred and fifty-five dollar plane ticket to Virginia and would be gone from the eleventh until the seventeenth. In November, when I had to be out of state for just three days, I informed the previous mayor, but he had things that he wanted to get done before he was out of office. Both times was messy sessions. The Monday night meeting was a pathetic attempt to make it seem as though some council members did not care about the business of the city. It tried to berate those not, uh, present at the meeting, but it seemed strange that everyone, including the present and previous mayor and the mayor pro temp who oversaw running the meetings, took the opportunity to have a gripe, gripe session, not the mayor, but the city manager, gripe session there, and there wasn't a quorum to have an official meeting. I saw it as if you can't harass them to their face, talk about them behind their back. Pathetic, just plain pathetic, and I tend to differ with all the innuendos, mudslinging and blaming. I received several calls telling me to watch YouTube council meeting while I was in Virginia. I wasn't spoiling my time with my family because I knew without seeing it that it was a pre-planned mess, and after seeing it, that thought was confirmed. Let me give you some bad facts. Out of forty-four council meetings in two thousand and eighteen, I missed two. Two out of forty-four. The council can get paid for meetings up called other than two set meetings, the first and the third, and if I'm not mistaken, it's forty dollars per meeting. In two thousand and eighteen, one council member got paid for sixteen additional hours. Another got paid for fifty-eight additional hours. One, another one got paid for fourteen and one got paid for four hours. One addition and got paid for one, one for additional hours. Okay, that was a total of a hundred and nine hours times forty dollars, which was four thousand, three hundred and sixty extra dollars paid to council members for all those extra meetings. Now, there was two people who did not take any of that pay. One was myself and one was Councilman French. At all those meetings that we had to attend, we did not charge, we did not put in any paperwork to the city. That is what you call commitment, not missing a one-hour complaining session that I'm sure you'll get paid for. Hopefully soon, this council will get itself back to doing the business of the city and stop complaining about each other and the mess that's going on.
Please, no applause. Councilmember Williamson, you have comments?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I want to just a little echo of, um, uh, council member Reed's comments. Thank you. That was well put. Uh, no one can top that, uh, tonight. Uh, I want to, um, kind of apologize to the people of my precinct and the people of Albion tonight that we, for a second meeting in a row, cannot do the business of the city. Uh, and, and, and remind everyone that the rules have been written as such. So we're, we're, I, I am feeling a little frustrated with the council rules as they are crafted because they have been, they're just, they're not workable, but I want to say, uh, hopefully we can get back to doing the business of the city soon.
City Attorney Hart.
Just so you know, it's a charter.
Sorry, charter.
Not a.
I, I'm talking about the council rules some earlier.
Okay. Uh, the items that are on the agenda this evening that weren't addressed, they'll be in future agendas. We'll wait and see as things develop, if we need to add a few things and delay other ones, but I assure you, they all will be addressed. Uh, I did want to talk about, there was an agenda item to talk about, uh, the mayor's engagement with the community and, uh, so I made a list of all the various meetings or at least some, most of the meetings and, and organizations I've met with. I won't bore you with that, other than to say it is, it's a fairly long list. Uh, and I will gladly say with all sincerity, I have a bit more respect for you there, Mr. Brown, uh, having sat in this chair and done those things. I, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt because I didn't verify if you did, did all the things that I've been doing, but I'm sure you were very, very busy. Uh, so that's the good part. I'm talking with people. There's a lot of exciting things going on in Albion. Uh, we are, as a council, here to do the city's business. We're here to represent you, uh, and I really did appreciate the comments about, we have six precincts and we have elected officials representing primarily driven and should be guided based on the interest of their precinct. Uh, and each council member has a methodology to go in through and, and figure out what they think is the interest and represent that for their precinct, but each also has an, uh, an obligation to represent the city. And so there's a balancing act there and it's, there is no mathematical formula that I'm aware of. Uh, but we hope and we try to give the benefit of the doubt that people try to do the best that they can. I will say that we, we collectively on the council, myself included, need to figure out how to find common grounds regardless of whether we have personal differences or not. Uh, I'll share with you a couple of things that were, I had very good last two weeks meeting with people, but I had one unhappy conversation with a, a local investor who's put a lot of, lot of money into this community, uh, stopped him while I was out walking my dogs one morning, and we had a nice conversation, uh, but then it turned to, you know, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I got to tell you this, uh, but kind of been watching what's going on and I thought maybe things were going to really change, and I guess that was naive, this is his comments, uh, and he said, I have to tell you that, you know, I just took five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars and invested it in Homer. Now, I like Homer. Homer's a great city, uh, really is, but it's, it's unfortunate that we lost that investment. Uh, we, there was an, an agenda item on the, the last Monday's meeting, uh, and if you looked at the package, there were some pretty dire consequences that came fairly close to happening. Uh, the first recommendation that was provided by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation was, here's how you can terminate your, the city's participation in, uh, the Peabody Building Project, which I think is a fantastic project. The city manager has publicly said she's behind it, uh, and so has Councilmember Brown, and yet all of a sudden with no other council member, uh, having any idea that this was going to happen, uh, it suddenly pops up on, on an agenda late on a Friday evening to hold a vote the following Monday, the Monday meeting that Councilmember Reed is referring to. Uh, and the first option presented was just, just tell us you want to pull out and you can pull out and then go get a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the, the entity who's putting money in and doing all these things. Uh, or you can work with us and we can just sort this out and we'll have him do some other things. Uh, interesting that, uh, I spoke with Mr. Dobbins, who's the investor, uh, who's been working at Project Kini's Family, and you read the letter and what the letter alluded to, there was an inspection and some things were found. So I called him, talked with him very early Saturday morning, and he said, what inspection? Nobody's contacted me, don't know anything about this. Uh, you can imagine he was a very unhappy camper, and I believe rightfully so. Uh, I reached out to the, to Albion's Economic Development Corporation, uh, totally unaware there was any issue in this particular area. Uh, so when I saw that this was the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and we have an issue that we need to resolve with them, the very first person that I thought of, uh, was geez, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, who's probably got the best working relationship here, been the longest with, is probably our economic development corporation, and I would think that would be a normal, good thing to pull them into it. Uh, and so that did, did happen. There was another meeting, uh, conference call, Sunday, or correction, Monday, and lo and behold, it was resolved. Uh, we're getting great support for them, and, uh, so it, it popped up all of a sudden was an issue, then it went, went away, just about the same thing. And so using that as an example, using the example of the investor who likes Albion and, and has put millions into this city over a period of years, uh, making the decision to go invest someplace else, talking with businesses that are part of the Chamber of Commerce and saying, it is hard to convince people to want to move here and work here and invest money when we see that the, the city council, it seems to be fighting amongst themselves. Uh, and so we have, you know, you've heard on Monday, you've heard other council members saying, we, this has got to stop, we got to do a better job. We absolutely must because this is, is driving away people, is driving away money, and those are the things that we need here in Albion. Uh, now, the city manager and I had a, had a couple of very good meetings with the Economic Development Corporation folks on some potential projects. Uh, nothing's set in stone yet, but we have a very good chance to bring some more business, some more jobs into the, into the city of Albion, uh, which is going to be great for the community. This does not make us any more competitive, uh, when we, when the things that are happening will, uh, continue to happen. So, uh, when we come here, we need to focus on city business and do that business. Uh, and yes, it's true. I don't, I don't particularly like having special meetings. I would like us to always be able to get everything done. Sometimes that's unavoidable, uh, and sometimes if you have a special necessity, then it's the best thing to have a special meeting. Did you have something? Okay, sorry. All right. So having said all that, quite at length for me, uh, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Please drive home extremely carefully.
Did you ask for public?
No, I didn't. Thank you. And I, my apologies, and you've all sat here very, very patiently. So are there public comments this evening?
I'm Rick Lang. I live at eight ten Haven Road. Um, I've had a few conversations of my own in the last week. I don't know exactly what happened, uh, with the origin of that emailed notice from the Michigan EDC. I'm hoping somebody can explain how it, it came out of nowhere and then was suddenly resolved. I have the impression that it, there was some misunderstanding by an inspector perhaps who didn't bother to check facts perhaps, and certainly, okay, I, I spent most of my career in auditing and consulting, and I would never send out a report that the person who the report was involved hadn't seen it first. That is completely unprofessional, and whoever's responsible for that ought to be in serious trouble. But if there's some way to provide some clarification as to what happened and how it was cleared up, I think there are a lot of people who would like to hear that. Thank you.
Any further public comments this evening?
Sucker for pain and, but I just, I think it's important to, to have factual information. Just two things I wanted to say. Uh, one of the things that the former council tried to commit to, and I believe, uh, the council member from precinct two agreed to this, is we normally had two regular set, uh, two regular scheduled meetings per month, um, but one of the recommendations was to have, the goal was to have at least maybe one work session a month to tackle different topics. So one of the things we did, there was a work session, for example, the code of ethics, or there was a work session with, uh, Attorney Smith, uh, we did a training in January of last year. Um, so we, that was one of the goals. Now, did we meet that every month? No, um, but, uh, normally what happens if you, if you have more business, you're going to have more meetings. Um, you know, I, I remember some of the earlier days from our council periods, we'd have three-hour meetings, um, under, uh, Mayor Domingo. Um, and then the second thing I'd say is in the, uh, public packet that went out for the meeting, uh, I want to say last Monday, the letter, I'm just going to read the letter. It goes to the, it goes to the manager and it says, the city of Albion has a grant to meet national objective of blight elimination. Uh, the contractor has an outstanding building labor issues, that was one, and the building owner was originally going to white box the first floor of the building. After the grant was in process, the building owner was, um, owner decided that he wanted to have the first floor be a bakery. The building owner was instructed not to start work on the first floor until the construction was completed and grant closed with the state. The MEDC received the building inspector's blight removal letter, um, stating that the work on the first floor was be, being under, being underway. So it seems like as part of the aspect of the grant, the grant was to be closed out before any work could be done on the bakery, and there was basically a failure to abide by the, um, grant guidelines. That's what it seems like it's saying. Um, and, and it, and it says the city of Albion has two options, and I'm running out of time, so it seems the options are either for the city to recoup the money or work with the developer to reuse that in a particular way. So it, it was basically, it seems from the letter that was public through our, our last packet, that there was a failure on the part of the developer to abide by the state, uh, guidelines that were dictated by the grant. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay. So. Okay. All right, so I'll address both of those and then, and then we'll ask for a motion to adjourn. I don't remember my password. Uh, okay, so Dr. Lang raised an issue about you wouldn't write a report that way, and, and after talking, talking to Mr. Dobbins, talking to Revitalize and a few other things, uh, there was apparently an inspection, uh, and so the facts in the letter are, some of them are technically correct. I won't say that some of them are not correct, but the devil is in the details, and so what I would offer up is that, uh, the letter being addressed in the way it was written, uh, and it was a pre- teleconference discussion, leads me to believe that, uh, this is something that had been being discussed and worked on, uh, in December, and in fact, that's what, what I was told by some of the parties to this, uh, but Mr. Bot, Dobbins hadn't been aware of it, and in fact, the, because the letter came out, big issue, have a teleconference at, in the afternoon and it is all resolved, and then within, I think it was four days, three days, the letter is issued that's, okay, all of the issues are completely done and now the grant is closed out. And so, uh, the devil is in the details and the, and the discussion and the determination of when something was done and wasn't done. There was some misunderstanding. Uh, the issue of whether it was going to be a bakery or not, I can tell you that the very first day, almost three years ago, that, uh, Mr. Bruce Johnson was over there looking at the building, I walked up walking my dogs and said, what are you putting in there? And he said, what do you want? I said, a bakery. And every time there's a survey, that's on the list, so it wasn't any secret really to anybody that, that that's where it was going to most likely end up. Yes, there were some things that weren't a hundred percent right, uh, but by putting it out that way and, and people seeing it going, oh, are they going to pull back all the funding as opposed to maybe we get it resolved before it becomes an issue? Uh, and so that's kind of the point there. Uh, I think that addresses both of the comments. Uh, the number of meetings and special meetings and so on and so forth, uh, I think people can go look at, at, at the, at the numbers that are, of the meetings that are held and, and take a look at November as an example, the number of special meetings and some of the things that were on there. Uh, Councilmember.
Mr. I'm just going to say one more thing because it just is.
Yep.
And we're not, we, you know, we don't have enough quorum for the rules or anything, but, um, I do want to say, like, I hope that we are going to turn the tide here in the community to start building up our neighbors and business owners and people doing good things in our community. I think that some are all too eager to tear down people that are investing and doing good things, either in downtown or other places in Albion. Um, so I'm hoping that folks in the community will make an effort, as, as well as people here on council, to start building up the folks that are putting their hard-earned money, uh, putting their time and energy and working with all the various entities in the community to make really good, positive things happen. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.